Like to call the regular board meeting of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Uh, could I have a roll call, please?
Oh, sure. Yes. Ms. Grisimkowsky.
Here.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am present, and Mr. Weisman.
Here.
We have a form.
Could everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each board member has in front of them the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Sure, I'll move that the Board of Education approved the agenda as presented.
Motion made by Member Ryan. Do I have a second?
Support.
And a support seconded by Member Cotter. Any corrections, amendments? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowsky.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before we go into the agenda, I do have a couple of comments. Um, as a school board, we appreciate the members of our community who share their public comments during the designated times during our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated for the board to conduct the business of the Huron Valley Schools in open session in accordance with the Open Meeting Act. Comments that require follow-up investigation or communication will be handled by the superintendent or a member of his team. There are two segments in the agenda for public comment, in sections three and section seven respectfully. Fifteen minutes have been allocated in section three for public comments related to action or voting items or non-action items if time allows. The Board of Education will allocate more than the fifteen minutes allocated in section three so that all public comments on action voting items may be heard in section three prior to the board voting on those items. All comments on non-action items will take place during section seven of the agenda if not already heard in section three. All speakers wishing to address the board must be present. All individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual during public comments will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share unused time with another person. A timer will be displayed on the screen so individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, a timer will sound indicating that public comments have concluded and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. We ask that you share your name, address, and home school district before sharing your comments. Further, furthermore, we request that you refrain from name-calling. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, the Board of Education, President, myself, will, to the extent permitted by the First Amendment, interrupt or end your comment time. If you plan to share your public comments, please complete the form in the back of the room and give your form to Ms. Cadell, seating at my far left with her hand up. Thank you for your professionalism, your partnership, and your willingness to communicate with the rest of the board. Next on the agenda is items from the Board of, Board President, myself. I only have a few. One, I want to extend my appreciation to a number of the board members that, since the last board meeting, uh, attended a number of meetings. Uh, we recently had an Oakland County School Board Association meeting uh, that, that focused on with our colleagues the key work of school boards. Uh, a couple of items that I want to remind people of that are coming up is, uh, the Board of Education um, has a community forum coming up in March. It gives an opportunity for our community to speak one-on-one, face-to-face with board members. We will be having those community forums on March tenth, which is a Monday, from six to seven-thirty at Lakewood Elementary, and then on Wednesday, March twelfth, at six to seven-thirty at Heritage. Another reminder of something that's coming up that's extraordinarily important for all of us is our junior kindergarten parent orientation. This is on March thirteenth at six o'clock, and I believe at each of our elementary schools. So that's very important. In addition, I do want to, uh, uh, give a shout out to those individuals. I know Denise Pistana specifically attended our, the Michigan Association School Board Winter Institute and attended a number of conference, uh, conference opportunities virtually. One on leadership, another one on teacher effectiveness, and another one on focusing on feedback. Another activity that one of our board members attended a few weeks ago, I know she's going to report out more formally, uh, at the next board meeting, but I'm going to turn it over to Laura Dodd. Maybe you can give us a quick overview of, uh, what you participated in on behalf of not only our community, but our students in our school board.
Sure. Uh, I just got back late last night from a long week of, of, uh, school board advocacy in Washington, D.C., Saturday through Wednesday, and then a personal trip to New York to see some Broadway shows with my daughter after that. So I'm a little sleepy today and not a hundred percent prepared for a report. Uh, each year we travel to D.C., this is my third year, to do some advocacy on be, on behalf of public education in, uh, in the U.S. And it's a whole bunch of school board folks from all over the country who come together. Michigan always has the biggest delegation, and this year Oakland County had the biggest group from Michigan. So it's nice to go with my school board colleagues. We do a bit of education and learning the first two days, and then the two days after that, we spend time going office-to-office talking to our legislative representatives, both in the Senate and the House, about priorities of, um, of Oakland County schools and me specifically here on Valley schools. And this year I was able to take stories, um, and examples from some of our families, which every representative says to us is the most important thing for them to hear, is how, what they're doing in, um, D.C. and also in Lansing when we advocate there, how it impacts every single family. So more for you about those conversations at our next meeting when I have time to breathe and put together a quick PowerPoint. Uh, but it was, um, time well-spent in a time where lots of decisions are being made about the future of public education in D.C.
Thank you very much, Vice President Dodd. Thank you for your advocacy. Uh, next on the agenda is recognition. I do not believe at, uh, at this meeting we have any heroes or highlights. Uh, I do have one citizen participation form. If you have any others, uh, you can pass those on to Ms. Cadell over, uh, in the pink sweater. Uh, next, uh, school presentations. Dr. Sla, Heritage Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everybody. Uh, this evening we have a number of folks here in the audience representing Heritage Elementary School, and it's my privilege to introduce Ms. Jenna Stevens, the proud principal of Heritage Elementary School.
Thank you for having us here this evening to highlight our school. Um, we have a lot of wonderful things that are happening at Heritage every day, but we decided as a group that we would highlight some of our Empower Hour classes that take place after school. We currently have a little bit over a hundred and fifty students that participate in eight of our Empower Hour classes, and they are all taught by, uh, Heritage Elementary Classroom teaching staff. I do have this evening here with me, Ms. Morgan. She is our technology teacher at Heritage, but she wears a lot of hats. She's also our data coach, our webmaster, our M-step coordinator. She does PM bus dismissal, so I can do parent pickup. And I do have to say that she attends every after-school event and is a huge part in making Heritage such a successful place to learn and grow. So I'm going to turn it over to her so she can introduce our students. But I do want to say that when we reached out to our staff to ask what students would be great representatives to talk about our Empower Hour, these students here with us tonight were recognized by the Empower Hour teachers for their leadership, their sportsmanship, and their willingness to always be kind to others. So that's why they're here tonight, and they put together this presentation on their own.
Thank you very much. Uh, again, I'm Amy Morgan. I'm the technology teacher at Heritage, and I'm also the teacher of the robotics club and the card game club. So for today, we have a great group of students. We have, for our craft club, we have Emily Terpay. We have, for robotics, we have Danny Cholish and Nikhil Chavonava. We have, uh, our card game club. Unfortunately, we have some sick students, so they couldn't quite come. But Nikhil is also a member of the card game club and the craft club and the writing club. So we have many students that participate in a lot of the different, uh, Empower Hours. In pre-B sports, we have Adrian and Keegan Sanborn. For our pottery club, our clay club, we have Aubrey Erland. For creative writing, we have Samantha East and Emily Terpays, also in the creative writing club as well. And then for our board games club, we have Miles Saliers and Grayson Darby.
So really quickly, we can highlight our teaching staff that stays after school with our students. We have Mrs. Kolb, who teaches fifth grade, and she's doing our craft club. Mrs. Morgan, who is our technology teacher, she's doing robotics and card game craze. Mr. Preby does pre-B sports. Mrs. Wa, Ms. Wozni does, is our art teacher, and she does our clay club. And then Mrs. Zalinski is a fifth-grade teacher, and she does creative writing and board games. So I'm going to turn it over to our first student, Emily Terpay, to talk to you about craft club.
Students of all ages come and enjoy the fun while, while creating a ton of different, of seasonal crafts. Drawings, paintings, and jewelry are just a few of the fun crafts. This class is no much fun. You can also watch shows and eat some artistic snacks, plus create fabulous art.
And now we have Nikhil and Danny to talk to you about robotics club.
Ozobots. I am Nikhil Chavonava, and I am in third grade.
And I'm Danny Cholish, in third grade, too.
In robotics, we get to try out three different types of robots. We spend two weeks on each robot and get to try different tasks and challenges.
Ozobots are really fun. You can draw lines, and they will add colors that the Ozobots will react to. You can also program them on the iPads. You can even play hide-and-seek with them.
All about botleys. Botleys are coding robots. You can code them on the remote. Once you learn, they're very fun to code. They can also do puzzles.
All about dashes. The dash robots are really fun. You can control them with tablets. They also make noises and light up. You can add a sound to it, a sound recording, so it can talk. We even got to have a race around the school.
Extras at the club. Before the club starts, we get snacks and get to chat with our schoolmates.
And now we're going to keep Nikhil up here. He is stepping in for Jordan Edie, who created the slide but cannot be with us because he is homesick.
Card game club. We start off with snacks, then we get to learn different card game, games each week. We learn how to play War, Egyptian War, Yuker, Speed, Uno, and many more.
Student perspectives. What do you like about card game club? I like all the different choices of games. Hudson from fourth grade. I like that we get to spend time with friends from Sawyer in third grade. I like playing the games. I can't wait to play Yuker with my family, Xander from second grade. I like that we get snacks and get to play games, Liliana from second grade.
And now we have Keegan and Adrian Sanborn, who are going to talk to you about pre-B sports, and we'll start with Adrian.
In pre-B sports, you learn how to play and do multiple sports. We learn about teamwork and the rules to play games correctly.
Um, activities. A couple of sports we practice are soccer, basketball, handball, and floor hockey, pre-B sports. Mr. Preby always makes this class fun, and everyone always feels included and important. This Empower Hour class is open to all school-age students.
Now we have Aubrey Erland for Clay Club.
Clay Club is so much fun. You get to talk and make friends and make clay sculptures. And don't worry if you don't know how to work clay. Ms. Wozni can help you every time you make a new masterpiece. At the end, we get to put our masterpieces in display. In my opinion, Clay Club is so much fun. I love having friends and making parties and making friends. I give it a hundred out of ten. Sometimes we even have snacks. Clay, in Clay Club, you get to make something new each time and keep it for yourself. Uh, uh, and at the end, we always get to have a fun party with, with the group. At the party, we always get pizza, snacks, and more. Clay Club is the best, so please, but join. If, it's always fun to make your own masterpiece.
And now we have Samantha East and Emily Terpay back to talk about our creating writing club.
Hi, my name is Emily Terpay.
And I'm Samantha East, and we'll be talking about Creative Writing Club.
Creative Writing Club is a fun after-school activity where you, where you can let your imaginant, imagination take over and let yourself write away. At Creative Writing Club, before we write, Ms. Z lets us play games. If you win the game, you get a prize. Then Ms. Z explains what we will be, what we will write about. Then after that, we start writing, and the fun begins. You can write whatever your mind thinks of and even draw the pictures of your dreams, of your dream. We also do some skits with up to two people. Also, sometimes we team up with our best friends and also sometimes, oh, have a great time. If I were you, I would sign up for Creative Writing Club. It is so fun to do.
Here are some writing activities. In Creative Writing Club, you write all about fantasy characters, monsters, superheroes, and much more. Ms. Zalinski lets us use, lets us use our imagination to make super fun fictional characters. Ms. Z even lets us share some of our stories with all the Creative Writing Club. It's so fun hearing other people's stories and all about their fictional characters. Also, it's so fun not having to write about your own personal life. We can let our imagination run wild. Now we have some students' perspectives. I asked them, what is your favorite part of Writing Club? Lucy, in fourth grade, said, my favorite part of Writing Club is being with my friends after school. Skylar, in fifth grade, said, my favorite part of Writing Club is all of the games and projects. Peyton, in third grade, said, I like to write creative sto, creative stories and have dance parties. Now I will tell you what we do at Creative Run, Creative Writing Club. When we get into Ms. Z's class, we grab a plate and get some snacks. Then once everyone gets into her class, we play games like a hoot, board games, or riddles. Then we start writing. After about thirty minutes, we will share some of our stories. That is all about Creative Writing Club. Thank you.
And now, excuse me, I'm going to turn it over to Grayson Darby and Miles Saliers to talk to you about board game, board game club, again with Mrs. Zalinski.
Hello, my name is Grayson Darby, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Miles Saliers, and I'm in fifth grade. What we do there, in game club, we got to play board games with our classmates and schoolmates. At the beginning of every club, we all play a Kahoot or an online quiz for prizes, like candy or erasers. What's also really fun is we get to spend the last two weeks making our own games. Building the games. You start, at the start, you get a giant poster of paper and your own space to work. You cut out pieces and decorate it. Then Ms. Z brings supplies, like dice, cards, and extra pieces. You have multiple days to finish. We brought our games to show you.
Thank you for learning about our Empower Hour classes.
Don't go anywhere. It's because I'm sure some people have some questions from the board. Yes, Lindsay.
Yes, thank you. I thoroughly enjoyed watching the PowerPoint even before you came tonight. Um, how often does your classes meet after school? Is this once a week, or?
Uh, it's once a week, um, for, like, on Thursdays or Wednesdays. For six weeks for every club.
Are the classes all on the same day after school or different days after school?
Different days, different days throughout the week.
So that's how children can go to a couple of the different clubs. Okay. Um, I noticed you have snacks and prizes. Is there a fee involved in taking these extra classes?
There is a fee involved in taking these classes, and then part of that fee goes towards, to some of the supplies and to some of the games. So it's through REC and Community Ed in partnership with the staff that teaches it.
Excellent. And, um, I'm glad so many children have the opportunity to participate, and I really wanted to thank the teachers for spending that extra time after school. I think you're doing some real nice things over at Heritage. Thank you, boys and girls.
Great. Any other, any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. It was very interesting. And this is in cooperation or in partnership with, uh, Community REC?
The Empower Hour classes are offered through Community REC, and the way that they're offered is, um, staff or non-staff. Any individual who has a talent or something that they're passionate about that they would like to share, they reach out to Shannon Loso at Community, or REC and Community Ed. She sets it up. They pick their schedule. We advertise it on our smore for our parents. They can sign up using a QR code, and it's really gained a lot of hype in our building, so it's super fun.
Great. And how long are these classes? For example, can I sign up for multiple classes? Can I go to a card club one week and then?
So each class runs on average six to eight weeks, but we try to stagger them so they're on different days. So we have multiple students that they, um, we do, for example, a fall, a winter, and a spring. So pre-B sports is on their second, second go-around right now. So then our students could do pre-B sports on Mondays, and they could then do craft club on Thursdays.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the information.
You're welcome.
It's important. Um, I'm going to tell you something, guys. The next item on the agenda is a report from our superintendent, okay? You can stay and listen to the superintendent and stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, or I'll go on reset, uh, on our recess for this meeting so that if you choose to leave, you could leave right now if you'd like, along with your parents. But you can stay, too. All right? So we're going to go on a short recess so you can make that decision. All right? Dr. Sla, I, I see that our presenters decided to leave.
I don't blame them.
All right, superintendent's communication.
Thank you. Uh, I'll be, I'll be brief here this evening. First and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Dodd for spending several days away from her family uh, on behalf of the Huron Valley Schools advocating for, uh, especially for IDEA funding. Uh, as many of our board members As many of our board members and educators know and recognize, IDEA has been in law for decades, since nineteen fifty. Or for fifty, I'm sorry, for fifty years. Fifty years, that's right, we just celebrated the. And yet, to this day, is still not fully funded. So that is a travesty and certainly a cause that is continuing, is worth the continued effort to advocate. So thank you, Ms. Dodd. I heard you did an outstanding job from some folks that were there with you, so nice job. Second item relates to redistricting. As I mentioned, after we released information regarding redistricting to the entire community, two of the prevalent questions we received were around open enrollment window, as well as the school, school of choice process. And as, as we have promised and communicated along the way, our open enrollment window just recently opened last week. So we have had a number of folks submit open enrollment requests. That window will close at the end of April. And so I just want to encourage those families who are interested, uh, please, even if you think you're not, you know, there isn't room, please submit a request. And we are going to honor as many requests as possible. And again, I would just point you to our, our webpage, where we have a tab that is exclusively dedicated to redistricting. And there are a number of questions on the FAQ document that, that I think many of, of our community members have expressed gratitude for, and that it's very helpful. So, so that. And then my final comment this evening, on Friday, lest we get an opportunity to attend, uh, both the girls and the boys Lakeland versus Milford basketball game. It's always a fun event to be at, because it's a cross-town rivalry, and there are just a lot of people from the community there. And there's a lot of energy and a lot of excitement, and the student sections are really pumped up. And they're just hilarious, frankly, to, to watch, as they're engaging in the game and getting excited. Uh, and between the games, there was a Hall of Fame event where several Lakeland High School graduates were honored and recognized for their athletic accomplishments. And really was extraordinary to hear the biography of the events and the accomplishments of, of these former students and, and all of their accomplishments. And to watch them now as, in many instances, walk across that floor as adults and, you know, productive members of society is quite rewarding to see as a, as a superintendent. I know Ms. Grzemkowski had two sons that were honored that evening, and so congratulations to you, Mrs. Grzemkowski. I know that's a very proud thing for, for a parent to experience. One of the young ladies I had a chance to talk to, she was standing next to me. She's running the Boston Marathon, uh, coming up here whenever the next one event is, is going to be. It's, when is it? It's like April, yeah. And I asked her, I said, so, so how quick do you run that? You know, and she said, I, I plan to run it in less than three hours. And I was just like, okay, wow, that's, that's pretty incredible. Because I couldn't run a, you know, anywhere near a full marathon in, in that amount of time. So, uh, just really proud of all of them. So with that, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Student Leadership. Denise Pistana, Chairperson of TLT.
Uh, yes, tonight we have Mick McNally. He's from Harbor High, and he's going to tell us what's happening there. We are, student leaders that come to TLT are very valuable. They keep us knowing what's going on, they give us feedback, and we couldn't do it without them, so. You can come on up, Mick.
Hello, I'm Mick McNally, I'm from Harbor High School. I, um, I'm a member of Student Leadership and Student Leader on the TLT Committee. At Harbor, recently, we've been, um, just picking back up after our teacher that runs it came back from, um, having a back surgery. She was gone for a few months. Now that she's more recovered and able to participate again, we've brought her back in. And we're just picking up, collecting cans again to, because that brought us in a lot of money last time, to help donate to charities and just whatever else we can try to do to help out around the school.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Harbor High is one of our, one of our four high schools, and you do a wonderful job, not only to the community, but the, the accolades and the, and the accomplishments of our students is certainly appreciated, respected, and, and acknowledged by all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do your best.
Next, we have Association Communications. I see Jennifer made it back.
We're not on, nation, last week was National School Counselor Week. We have a dynamic group of counselors at our middle schools and high schools who work to support our students, families, and staff. Our counselors, along with our social workers and psychologists, form our Student Support Services teams. These teams work alongside administration and our educators. Each day, they navigate the challenge of our teenage students. The ups and downs of their emotions, their search for independence, their need for support, and their academic highs and lows. Each day in Student Support Services is a new adventure, as you never know when there will be a student or a family in need. Their days are very unpredictable, as a crisis is never planned or written into their calendars. These educators have a unique skill set. They are calm under pressure, they're empathic and kind, they're flexible, and they have just the right knack of knowing when a student needs time to talk and when that same student needs a plan to get back to class. They work hard to find the balance between supporting students emotionally and making sure that our students are in class so they can achieve academically. It is definitely a delicate balance at times. Everyone in Student Support Services has seen their roles change over the past few years, as the mental health needs of our students have increased. Just like our teachers, these educators' days have become more challenging as we all work together to support our students. So a huge shout-out tonight to our counselors, social workers, and psychologists. Our students and families and staffs are fortunate to have your knowledge, empathy, problem-solving skills, and guidance to enable us to meet the challenges of our teenage students. What you do makes a difference in all of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, couldn't agree more. Next, Board Correspondents, Secretary Pistana, any Board Correspondents?
No correspondents tonight.
Okay, Treasurer's Report?
None this evening.
Nothing at this time? Uh, reports from the Board Committee? We do not, I do not have a Executive Committee Report, since we have not met since the last Board Meeting. Our next meeting will be on February twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday, at the administrative offices. Teaching Learning Technology Committee, Chairperson Pistana.
Yes, we met on January twenty-eighth at the Administration Building. The meeting was called to order at four oh three. Present were myself, Ms. Cotter, Mr. Dimick, uh, Mr. Tverneier, Dr. Sala, Mr. Limberg, Ms. Bjorkman, Dr. Nemeth, Mr. Endicott, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Horwitz, uh, Mike McNally, Jake Verbic, and, uh, Mr. Twig. There was no public comment. Uh, we discussed Board Policy fifty-five hundred. The committee discussed possible updates to student conduct. Neola has provided suggested language focusing on academic honesty and the use of artificial intelligence. The committee recognizes the quickly changing landscape and the need for both student and teacher input on this topic. We will be further discussing it at future meetings. New Business, we discussed the innovative programming for Gifted and Talented update. Dr. Nemeth provided an update with a focus on the expansion into the middle school this year. The leadership team includes Lori Stewart, Debbie Tallin, Seth Stern, Lisa Zelenkowsky, Katie Samborn, Dave Brown, Adam Weiger, and Kara, or Sarah Cartwright. This year, fifty-three students at the middle school level qualified for participation in monthly activities, as well as a planned field trip to Michigan State University. Uh, under New Business, we talked about Bid Pack T5, the high school audiovisual, the new multipurpose flexible learning space. At Milford and Lakeland High Schools have been designed with audio and visual equipment to support large group instructions and other events. Bid Package T5 was issued for this work and four bids were received. The committee supported the district recommendations and for this item to appear on the regular agenda at tonight's meeting. We talked about the E-Rate Fiber bid, and in preparation for upcoming renovations at White Lake Middle School and Milford High School campus, portions of the fiber optic infrastructure need to be moved as part of the twenty-nineteen bond. Bids were issued through the E-Rate Form four-seventy process through USAC, and three bids were received. The committee supported the district recommendations and for this item to appear, appear on the regular agenda at tonight's meeting. We discussed Flyleaf Early Literacy Resource Purchase. The district has continued to update curriculum, provide professional learning, and evaluate resources to support early literacy instruction. In December of twenty-twenty-three, the district purchased Flyleaf Reading Series One and Two for intervention teams to use as a supplemental resource. The district is recommending the purchase of Flyleaf Reading Series Three as an additional supplemental resource for struggling readers at higher grade levels. This purchase is budgeted in the Section Thirty-five A Literis- Early Literacy Grant. The committee supported this as appearing as new business at tonight's meeting. No safety and security updates for student leadership. Uh, we discussed, Jake discussed the AP Literature Class was traveling to the University of Michigan. And he reported that, um, NHS and the Joy Club have several projects they're working on. Our next meeting is, uh, February twelfth, which is Wednesday, at four PM. We adjourned at five oh seven.
Thank you very much. Finance and Operations, Chairperson Grzemkowski?
Finance and Operations did not meet last week, so I do not have minutes for you. We are meeting again on February twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Communications, Marketing, and Legislation?
We have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is tomorrow, February eleventh, at two-thirty at the Admin Building.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Public Comments. I do not have any public comments for action items. Correct? I do have one public comment on a non-action item, so we'll take it, uh, within Section Three. Janet, I believe, Romer?
Hello, um, my name is Janet Romer. I've been in Huron Valley School, Milford, since nineteen ninety-two. I have a grandson who is at Mira Middle School, who is on a special education, IEP. And as of today, the United States House of Representatives introduced Bill eight ninety-nine to eliminate the Department of Education. And I have heard nothing from the district, nor has my daughter, about what that's going to do. And I really think that, you know, there's still a chance we can stop it if we contact our representatives and senators. Giving the power of the purse, taking it away from the Department of Education, you talk now about funding. I can guarantee you, I taught special ed for fifty years. I taught hearing impaired students. And if you give the power of the purse to somebody else besides the Department of Education, you think funding's bad now? You haven't got a clue. And I really think, as a Board of Education, it's incumbent on you to let the community know. Because if this hits like it's going to hit, you know whose heads are going to roll? Yours. Because the public is going to come to you and say, why didn't you warn us? We didn't know what that meant. We didn't know that would impact my special education child. We didn't know it would impact Pell Grants. What is this going to mean to the people in this community? And I feel it's your job, I don't know who else it would be, to let them know what's going to happen to education and funding and education if this money is taken away and these programs are not mandated. And I think that's the piece that people have to understand. Right now, IEPs are mandated by federal law. If federal law goes away, so can IEPs. So can all of it. Because mandates are what make it happen. Money's tight everywhere, and it's, you can't cut a mandated program. If it's not mandated, you can cut it. And I think people need to know that. And I think it's on you to get this information to the voters. I don't care if it's a thing in the paper, it's a flyer, an email to the families, but I think you better warn them. Because if you don't, you're going to be the ones that they're going to come to and say, why didn't you tell us? My autism child doesn't have the same services. My hearing impaired child doesn't have the same services. My multiply impaired child doesn't have the same services. And I, I'm just giving you a heads up, because I think it's very unfair not to tell them what's coming. Because it is coming, it's been introduced already. There's an executive order, which doesn't mean anything, because they can't end it by executive order, but Congress can.
Thank you for your comments. Next, on Consent Agenda, we have Exhibits A-one through A-three. Approval of Minutes, the approval of summary of expenditures and check register that can be found on our website, and the approval of Personnel Report. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, A-one through A-three?
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, A-one through A-three, as presented.
Okay, motion made by Member Dimick. Do I have a second?
I'll support that.
All right. Motion made by Member Dimick, seconded by Member Cotter. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grzemkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, under Unfinished Business, Junior Kindergarten Phonics Resource Purchase, Exhibit B. This was presented to us at the last Board Meeting. Dr. Sala?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't believe we've had any questions. Have you, Mr. Tverneier?
No.
So, um, we would request JK Phonics Resource Purchase as presented in Exhibit B, based on the presentation from the last Board Meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions right now at the table? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please? Or, excuse me, could I have a motion, please? Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion made by Member Cotter, seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Treasurer Grzemkowski. Now, could we have a roll call?
Absolutely.
Once again, thank you, Mrs. Dodd, for taking care of me.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Ms. Grzemkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, uh, on the agenda, we have a number of, uh, new business items. I think the first one that we start off with is Michigan Association School Board, Board of Directors' election. I brought this up, uh, as an item last Board Meeting, now it's being formally presented to you. Under New Business, MASB Board of Directors comprised of twenty-four members, including three-at-large directors, sixteen directors elected from the eight regions, two elected from each region, one directed from Groups Five, Six, and Seven. I believe, within those two groups, we have a couple of Oakland County, uh, representatives, based on the size of districts. And then Huron Valley is part of also Region Eight. With this, and HVS, Huron Valley Schools, has been asked to select one candidate for a three-year term on this Board of Directors. Attached within your document, and I believe I've sent this to you before, is information on the eight candidates who are running in our Region Eight, which is comprised of the Macomb ISD, Wayne, Risa, and Oakland Schools, are those three counties. The district's choice must be submitted by March fifth. I believe we have a Board Meeting on March third. So I've asked, uh, the, uh, our Subcommittee that is composed of the Marketing, Communication, and Legislation to take a look at this and to provide some input and some direction, some recommendations. At the same time, I asked the rest of the Board to take a look at these candidates, and if you have a recommendation to that committee, or you, or you have some strong feelings one way or the other as it relates to candidates, please provide that information to them. And then, over the next two weeks, we'll have that, uh, we'll have that in front of the Subcommittee with the recommendation. And it'll be brought forth to the, the Board as a whole for a vote, so that we can submit our vote as a school board to open schools in a timely fashion. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Lindsay?
Yes, um, we've been receiving-
Yes, we've been receiving emails regarding the candidates that were available. The information you provided gave a great synopsis, but we're only to choose one-
That is correct.
-of the eight. I called them contestants. The eight going for the position. And then tomorrow, at our Legislative Communication Meeting, we'll come up with a candidate.
A recommendation.
A recommendation.
Yeah. I asked the committee to kind of take a closer look-
Mm-hmm.
...and review the eight candidates, because there isn't, obviously, a substantial number.
Yes.
They're from three different counties. So, obviously, we need to get some input to see if we're familiar with any of them. I do know that there has been a video that's been placed out through Oakland Schools that has been presented to all of us that we can review also. So, while we have that committee meeting tomorrow, I'm sure as we work through that subcommittee, we need to hear input from all the board members. I know we have received some input from Ms. Grzyzynkowski as it relates to that, so provide as much input and direction as you possibly can. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item. Next item on the agenda, under New Business, is the Audio-Visual Bid Pack T5. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sala.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would turn this one over to Mr. Taverne.
And if I can, I'd like to request that we combine the next two items on the agenda, so Audio-Visual Bid Package T5, Exhibit D, and the WAN Fiber E-Rate Bid, Exhibit E. If we can pull those kind of together, where they're two separate items on the agenda, two different exhibits, but I would invite our Director of Technology, Scott Endicott, to come up. He has a presentation to address both those items.
Good evening, Board and Co team. It's a pleasure to be here. Just have an overview of what John was just talking about here. We have two bid packs that we did recently, or that we're in process of doing. The first one is a high school audiovisual pack, and the second one is a fiber optic network cabling bid. The first one, we'll talk about high school AV. This is redoing or doing the AV systems in two multipurpose rooms, one in Lakeland and one at Milford. This is a great use of this unused space. And then, once we talk about those, we'll talk about the admin wing remodel. This is the unused space we're talking about here. You'll notice it's sort of set up like this, in that there's TV coverage and interactive display coverage. You see interactive displays along the right side there. So this can be used as three separate meeting rooms, or multipurpose rooms, or it can open into one large area for banquets and things like, you know, for bigger gatherings. And so, we expect our AV system to accommodate both of those uses. It will have microphones, speakers, Bluetooth receiver in each one of these three sections, in addition to making it all work together, you know, if it's configured that way. And also, you know, smart interactive displays will be one at the front of the room when it's in sort of banquet mode, and then there will be singular ones for when it's used individually. And that's one at each high school, one at Milford and one at Lakeland. Then the third piece of the first bid pack is the admin wing remodel. When all the admin folks get moved over from the current administration building to here, we expect that, you know, we have some technology needs that we're going to be realizing. So, one of them is shared conference rooms. We're going to have a number of conference rooms with interactive displays, like smart boards that you see here, in addition to video conferencing systems, so you can come in and do a Zoom call, or a meet, or a Teams meeting, sort of natively. You come in and you're all set up to do those, in addition to a digital signage display at the front of the area, and possibly some office displays. So that's the first, oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead one slide here. So we interviewed three of the four vendors who bid for this, for this, and we came up with Alcom as our recommendation. And not only were they the low bid, but they're actually a local company, they're in Commerce, a small company that we hadn't dealt with before, so we decided that we would interview several of their references, in addition to making a site visit where they've done some work. And it was exemplary work. It was really, really good. You could tell it when you saw the cabling was nice and neat. Everything was in order, so we're very excited about having them come in to do these spaces. And then, the second part, or the second bid, as you know, John said, we were kind of combining two, this is the second piece, the fiber optic network cabling. Under the E-rate program, these costs that you'll see on the later slide will be discounted, you know, significantly beyond, you know, the quotes we received. Going to be some work at Milford and Lakeland High School. The Milford work that we're going to have done, you'll see the green line is sort of where our current fiber optic cable comes in. It's our ISP, Oakland Schools provides internet through this fiber cable. So it comes down Milford Road, and you'll see it goes through the admin building there, sort of in the middle of the screen. So in anticipation of the admin building not being used, we needed to work around this. You'll see there's a yellow line there, that represents some network cabling that we laid about two years ago, in anticipation of these changes that were going, going to be needed. When the work is done, the yellow cable, or the yellow lines here, that's our new work, and that's going to bring our Oakland Schools fiber over to the Boulevard, to our new cabling, and then directly back to Milford High School. And so we'll eliminate the need to go through the admin building with our fiber cabling. Similarly, at Lakeland, you'll see two green lines here, there's internet coming through both of these from Oakland Schools, and you'll see one goes directly to Lakeland, and the other goes, it goes to White Lake first, but then it also goes down to Lakewood. With the anticipation of all the construction and work that's going to be done on White Lake Middle School, we thought that, you know, we didn't want to risk a lot of outages and a lot of pain points when, if and when there were fiber damage or cable damage through that renovation. So what we decided to do is, you'll see from, between Lakeland and there's a small building in the, sort of the middle of the screen, that's called the Pump House, it's sort of a maintenance building, but we have fiber run to that building currently. So what we're going to do is extend that fiber, the yellow line here, we're going to extend that, and that's going to feed Lakewood Elementary, to sort of sidestep the idea of White Lake feeding that. In addition, you can see the dotted line there, that's old cabling that needed to be replaced anyway, so that will be all, you know, it will be all replaced eventually. But for now, this is the way it's going to be set up. We got three bids for this, and we were happy to see that AMCOM was one of our bidders. There are actually our current, now, AMCOM is not to be confused with Alcom from the previous bid. AMCOM is our current vendor, we have a contract with them for fiber maintenance. So anytime there's a fiber cut or damage to any fiber, they're who we call, and they're out, we've been very happy with how they've treated us, they've been a very, we valued their partnership, and they've done a great job for us. So, we're happy to see that they're the low bid, so we'll be recommending AMCOM for this bid pack. Questions, comments, or jokes?
Any questions? Yes, Amy.
I'm going to apologize now for my voice, but this, the Milford campus, as we prepare for the middle school, how does the new, how do the new fiber lines, do they, are they, are they going to be in a place where we can prep for that new middle school? Or, well, obviously, we can't do too much because of construction, but can we do this in such a way that it makes it easy for us to tie in?
I think since we have, we have different ways of doing it. We can either go from Milford over to the new middle school, which will be on, you know, according to the picture there, it'll be under those tennis courts there. And we could either do it that way, or we could, you know, it's going to be really, we're going to rely on our vendor to tell us what the best way of that cabling is. And also, Paul Twiggs here, he's our technology consultant, not sure if you have anything to add, you know, for that. He's done the bulk of the work on this project, so he deserves a lot of this, the credit on getting this to where it is now.
The E-rate projects are good for, we're bidding now for work that would take place between '25 and '26. Eventually, when the new middle school goes in, we'll do another E-rate bid for all the cabling associated with it. So probably a year from now, you'll see us coming with that recommendation. And that fiber will most likely just come directly from Milford High School.
Yes, Laura.
So, coming off of my advocacy week, I, you know, would be remiss, we talk about a lot when funding for things comes from our voters and from our programs, but E-rate is something that's a little ambiguous to the general person, and I think it's important, as we're talking about advocacy and being the know about what's happening with public education right now, that the people in the listening audience understand. So, the E-rate program, just in a real simple form, is, it's called the Universal Services Program for Schools and Libraries, and it allows us to have funding and discounts on products that help us walk into the 21st century. So, internet, computers, almost most of the technology we buy, we buy through the E-rate program in order to get special pricing, correct?
I'll let Paul take this one, but yes and no.
Okay. So Paul, I'm kind of testifying here, so it's okay. So, correct that if I'm wrong, just to-
The only correction is the computers. It's there for infrastructure-
Infrastructure, okay.
-so, cabling, network switches, the wireless access points above our heads, all of that.
The things that we are, we have to have in order to make any of it work. So our one-to-one computers would be useless were it not for all of these things. Our cybersecurity and all of that sort of stuff would be useless were it not for all these things.
Correct. And in the 2019 bond, it was well into the six figures, the reimbursement the district got back. So it's been a very good program for Huron Valley.
An excellent program for Huron Valley. It is currently in the Supreme Court of the United States that it's struck down because it's unconstitutional. So, when we talk about looking to see what's happening in the world, there is a lot happening in the world right now. And right now, we have to watch this case, because for us and Huron Valley, this could cost us a lot more money. So, knowing that, how fast we have to get this done before we beat the Supreme Court to it? Anyone?
Good question.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this project- This project will get done once you approve it. In terms of, you know, down the road, a year from now, no idea. It's sort of like the conversation we heard during public comment, that needs to take place as well with respect to IDEA. There could be tremendous implications for federal funding in general, and lots of strings attached, should we accept federal funding.
I think the biggest piece is the recognition that if the E-rate is struck down and it's unconstitutional, these projects that we have will be funding 100% as opposed to them being subsidized roughly on a 60/40 basis with federal dollars. And what that meant with the last bond issue is that we were able to accomplish additional work because the federal government was subsidizing some of that work, some of the infrastructure that we did. So with that in place, in the work that we've done to bring ourselves and our students to the 21st century, we were in partnership with the federal government to make those things happen. Thus, we were able to do more with our local dollars than we anticipated because there was that partnership. Is that fair?
That's exactly right.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Laura, go ahead.
Well, and I, just to finalize that, it's, it's, there's a lot of moving parts, and being aware of that as we move forward with this, and how it could impact our budgets going forward, I think is important. So, you know, getting these investments in and getting them done, I'm very supportive of, so I appreciate the work. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one question, and it was on the slide that's, the second slide, that shows the abandonment of the fiber for the administrative offices. That, right there. There, I, I think, I just want to make sure that everybody, we have fiber going to Heritage Elementary, it's just not on there, correct? There should be a green line to Heritage.
Correct.
Correct?
You're incorrect.
There's an existing, and that's not being touched.
It's not being touched.
Okay. I just want to make sure people understand, we have fiber going to all of our buildings. Okay, great. All right, if there are no other questions, this is New Business. We'll have, like we always do within our process, we'll have two weeks to look this over a little bit more. If there are any questions, we'll pass them on to Dr. Sala, and he'll work with John and Scott and Paul to get those answers back to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're all appreciated.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, if I can get the agenda-
So, last item, do you want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Last item we have is Item D, Flyleaf Early Literacy Resource, Exhibit F, and I will invite Mr. Taverne to handle this one as well.
All right, so you also heard about this during the TLT Committee report, and so I'm going to invite Ms. Bjorkman, our Director of State and Federal Programs. She's going to review this purchase with you. We've had a lot of literacy supports and, with grant funds that we received, and so we did put a summary in this evening's presentation, because I know that was a question, President Weisman, I think you asked at the last meeting, about just kind of holistically what, how these grant funds have been used. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bjorkman.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Pastana, for doing a nice job sharing what I'm going to share with you a little bit more detail. So, good evening, everyone. Today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about a resource called Flyleaf. It is a supplemental resource that we would like to use, that we are currently using, and would like to expand on the resource that we already have. So, as we talked about last week, we talked about the 35J Grant. This week, we're going to, this presentation is through the 35A Grant, and as John said, excuse me, I'll share a little bit about both, so you can kind of see what this funding supports, and that these are both state grants. So, Section 35A is an early literacy grant. The funds are used to provide additional support and resources for pre-K through five students who are identified through assessments as showing signs of a reading deficiency. This grant funds can be used for a variety of purposes, often including staff, assessments, guest teachers for assessments, technology, reading materials, and professional development. Huron Valley has allocated $106,624 this year for the grant. It has been in play ever since the initiation of the Read by Grade Three Law, and it is typically around $100,000 we receive each year. It is a grant based on a per pupil allocation, with the formula being on the number of first grade students in the spring count of the previous year. So, and then, again, as I said, it's been continually funded since the inception of the Read by Grade Three legislation. And then, just to give a reminder of last week, we talked about 35J, the Section 35J Early Literacy Grant, and this is a grant used to support really getting the knowledge and skills to our teachers regarding the science of reading and best practices for teaching and for professional development. So with that grant, we were allocated just over $1 million to be used through September of 2025. This grant does have a large number of compliance requirements, one being that all pre-K through five teachers will be provided professional development in the science of reading. We will be providing those professional development sessions on our February 25th Professional Learning Day and our May 6th one coming up. We also are in the process of developing our comprehensive literacy system. You have heard Ms. Misga and Ms. Talan talk extensively about some of that programming in our TLT Committee. And so, this grant is really being able to provide us with a lot of supplemental resources and a lot of professional learning, which is, will really put us in a great place for when the dyslexia legislation comes into play during the '26, '27 school year. So just a little bit of a crosswalk, so you can see what these two grants have funded. So, and if you could look, there is a star next to things that have already been implemented, and then there are other things I will reference that we'll be coming back to the Board for, for approval. For Section 35A, we have funds for supplies and materials, we have, are here to tonight to talk about student books for small group intervention. We will also be looking at some high engagement, low-level books, professional learning books, and then we use our 35A funds to support guest teachers for our literacy assessments. The grant allows for 5%. Um, the grant allows for 5%, which is usually around 35 subs for, for our elementary buildings. And then we also use 35A funding for interventionist support. 35J is the million dollar grant I just spoke about. Um, we will be coming to the board with, um, a large grant, uh, a large request to use these funds to purchase abundant reading material for pre-K through fifth grade. At our upcoming PD Day, all of our cohorts, or many of our cohorts, will be using that time to look at the suggested resources that Book Source has helped us, um, review and create lists of appropriate books for each grade level. We'll also be looking at, um, catch up and just write high interest books. We have already come to the board for spellography resources and decodable resources for our students. The Hand to Mind JK Phonics Resource was just, or JK Resource was just approved. And, uh, we will be coming, uh, back with some pre-K resources. Again, we are allowed to use guest teachers, which we have been for literacy professional learning and for literacy curriculum work. And then we will use these funds to provide Reading League support, um, for our professional learning coming up and literacy coach and, um, literacy teacher leader support. So we're coming to you tonight to ask for approval for Flyleaf Reading Series 3. As Ms. Pistana shared, in December of 2023, last school year, we came to the board asking for approval to purchase the Flyleaf Reading Inter- Reading Series 1 and 2. These resources are used, um, during wind time with our intervention teachers, and this resource would be the same. In addition to that, we are asking for additional copies of all of the, the small group reading decodable books that go along with these series. Those books would also be used during intervention, wind time with our literacy coaches and also have additional sets so classrooms could also use them as well. So these supplemental resources would be used during wind time. The scope of our grant is that this is, um, a supplemental resource. Will be used to support intervention. It aligns with our classroom instruction, our U-Fly resource and our spellography word study resources. Uh, it does include a teacher's manual and it allows for small group support using the same text. Um, and this purchase does meet the requirements of the Section 35A Grant. So, um, it is recommended that the board approve the purchase of this supplemental resource with additional copies for, of decodable texts for Reading Series 1, 2, and 3 for students to use during interventions. And I know this is just new business, so, um, if you have any questions or anything I can help clarify, please let me know.
We'll follow the same process as we always do where you'll have two weeks before it comes back to the board or at our next board meeting. But does anybody have any questions right now? Yes, Amy.
Again, I apologize for my voice.
Me too.
Um, Section 35A and Section 35J, are they specifically for pre-K to five? I love all the work that we're doing. You know, I love science of reading. I love having decodable books. I love the, the training that we're giving our, is, our teachers. But we have a lot of students that are in middle school and high school that, quite frankly, we didn't have all these supports available to them. How are we coming alongside middle school and high school? And maybe these grants aren't for that. I just would like some clarification around that.
The, these grants are specific only up until grade five. But I will share that, um, you know, the good news with some of this new dyslexia legislation is, um, there will be requirements for high, uh, secondary literacy coaches and support at the secondary level as well. So, um, it looks, you know, to be moving to bridge that from just K5, JK pre-K5 to JK pre-K12.
Any other questions at this time? I have a couple. Um, you went over on the slide two, the 35A Grant. And you stated that we've been allocated, and this is something that we've been getting on an annual basis. So it's reoccurring and it's consumables and it's like one of those categoricals. But it's been funded by, in the, in the state budget on an annual basis.
Yes.
The 35J, that's, when I read this and understand this, it sounds like it's a one-time only. Is that-
Yes.
Fair?
It feels like that. It does not feel like it will be a reoccurring grant, no.
Which then leads me to a question. Obviously, on the third slide, you have the two columns, 35A, which is reoccurring, reoccurring consumables, reoccurring costs, right? That we can, and it's something that we've been getting on an annual basis. But all those things on the right-hand side, 35J, is funded through a grant one time only. And there are some reoccurring costs there.
Yes.
Obviously, that's going to have an effect on choices and what we can sup- we can provide support. I'm not looking for an answer to that because I trust that you're, you're having those conversations right now. But you can see all those things on the right-hand side are supports for our students that there was one-time only money for, that now become a reoccurring cost potentially that we're going to have to make some decisions about as a board and as a, as, as a team here as it relates to what we can, we can provide. It's very similar to what we're facing with safety and security. While we have funding for these things right now, they're grants and they're one-time only, and we're going to have to make some hard choices as it relates to funding. Either it's going to come out of our fund balance or we're going to have to make choices on services that we provide.
And Mr. Wiseman-
Would that be a fair statement?
I was just going to say, we've been very fortunate with, um, an increase in our state, um, allocation of 31A funding. And, um, so some of these reoccurring funds would most likely move to 31A, um, grant funding.
To backfill-
To make sure that there's continuation of those supports.
So it might not be a case that we can, we can spend those increases on consumables, but we could move them to help support some of those things that we've brought on because of that other grant, which is one-time only.
And our, our hope with many of these resources is they will have a, a longer shelf life than just a consumable. You know, these resources, we would imagine, would last, uh, hopefully between five to 10 years. You know, we would hope they would have a longer shelf life than just, um, being consumable. With the spellography resource, that is something, um, that we did know when we brought that to the committee. Um, we do know that as we are looking for a comprehensive literacy resource and our team is doing that, possibly that will be folded into that resource. So at the time, that is a resource that is kind of helping us make sure our students get that, um, morphology and word study, um, learning. But we were looking for our comprehensive resource to also cover that.
Great, thank you.
One, one other thing I would add to that is we're, we're fortunate in that our TLT team has really recognized sort of the shifting landscape and, uh, and, and sort of the research paradigm shift in, in literacy, especially early literacy. And these funds could not have come at a more opportune time in educational history, if you will, because it has allowed us to be very strategic in terms of infusing these resources. And sustainability will not be as costly as the initial onset or the initial infusion. Um, and so as we continue to provide professional learning for our staff, as they grow, um, and, and the, and the methods as it relates to science of reading, it will become second nature. And, and then our normal routine of, uh, curriculum resource purchases will fall right into, into our general fund cycle. And so in that way, there is a plan and there is a, uh, there, and there are resources in the normal course of business to support updating materials as, as needed. So it's, it's sort of like the summer school program, um, that, you know, was fully supported when we came out of COVID with one-time monies. And, and those one-time monies have since gone away and we've been able to support for our neediest populations, and we've continued to do that. Whereas, you know, safety and security is a little different because there is never just a one-time infusion of, of people, right? To, to, to help monitor our facilities and, and keep our buildings safe at all times. That's an ongoing cost that, that doesn't go away. And so, so I really do give our TLT Department a lot of credit because they've been very thoughtful and strategic in how they've approached this.
And I, and I agree. I, from what my experience, being on a member of the board, we've always been strategic. We've always been looking ahead of how we're going to sustain those programs and how it gets integrated into our instructional culture. So I, I, I appreciate that. But it's, it's something that people need to be aware of, that, that there is funds, funding and, and that we have to be aware of, not only at the federal level, but at the state level as it relates to, funding means programs, which means opportunities for kids. So we just need to be aware of that. So I appreciate that. Jennifer, I appreciate that and I appreciate John and, and Paul, uh, elaborating on that. We have two more weeks, or I think it's two more weeks before our next board meeting. Might be, might be three weeks, I'm not sure. But at, two? All right. So over those next couple of weeks, if you, if you have any questions, please pass them on. Thank you. Next on the agenda, uh, is public comments on non-action items. I don't believe we have any more. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Good and Welfare. Good and Welfare, Board of Education, Dr. Slaugh. Anyone have anything under Good and Welfare? Yes, Denise?
It's a cold day in February, but I'm going to talk about the Huron Valley Education Foundation Golf Outing, Second Annual Golf Outing, Thursday, June 26th. Mark it on your calendars. Um, it was a great time last year, thanks to Jeffrey and his staff, and we expect another great time, so, June 26th, be there. Thank you.
What does a golf outing do, other than having a good time?
It raises funds for the Huron Valley Education Foundation, which in turn, um, provides grants for our teachers to do innovative programs for their students.
Great, thank you. Any other Good and Welfare? Yes, Laura?
So, um, I appreciate Ms. Romer's comments earlier today, and I believe it's incumbent upon each of us to pay attention and be aware of what's happening and, um, and if we feel it's appropriate, becoming advocates in our own way. Uh, one of the things I noticed while sitting in each of the offices of our elected representatives is the kind person sitting at the front answering the phone and taking comments from people who were calling and then writing those comments down and keeping a tally of who's calling and what they're calling about. And in every one of our meetings with the staff who work with the elected representatives, they said how important those calls are. So, uh, I, I, I'm happy to provide a little bit more information at our next meeting about some of the things that happened while I was in Washington. But there are a lot of resources for people who are interested online. Our professional organization is the National School Board Association. The Michigan Association of School Boards also has information and advocacy for us as board members. Um, the National Parent Teacher Association and, um, and just a, a whole host of groups out there that are keeping a pulse on this. It's easy, rewind. It is normal to be concerned and, um, be jerked back and forth by the news from here, the news from there, the news from everywhere. Um, and what I would encourage is really, uh, find some trusted sources that have good information about this and let them help, uh, as you're going through. So, um, but everyone's advocacy is their personal advocacy. What I'm advocating for may not be what you're advocating for. Uh, so more information to come about what we, what I advocated for on the, on behalf of our professional associations at our next meeting. Um, but I agree with Mrs. Romer. Be, be, be aware, be, um, uh, be an advocate. Call if you feel like you need to call, even if it's a call and it's not something they're talking about right now. Those people who sit at the front desks of every elected person are very kind people who are happy to take your call and answer questions. So that's, um, my piece of advice as we end this.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Anything else, Dr. Slaugh?
I will call Ms. Romer.
You'll call, Ms. Romer. Thank you very much. And that's part of our process, is when people have comments, it's, it's for us to take an opportunity to listen and then we follow up and, and communicate back. So I appreciate that. Seeing-